...tolerance, that means that the woman who made the sale was terminated from her position. It was a very unfortunate thing, but we felt that in order to keep with the corporate position and to demonstrate to our other employees the seriousness of the violation, that that is what had to be done. After that event, we ran a refresher course for all of the employees who are involved in the sale of alcohol, and most of our employees have been certified within six months of today. And we have three employees who are outside of that, and we are doing a training session for them in the coming weeks. Also, Melissa went ahead and put up extra signs in the establishment and including in the places where the employees go, the break rooms, you know, have you checked, have you asked that people are 21 before you make a purchase or make a sale? And in addition, in November, Melissa purchased a Tokenworks ID scanner to take away some of the discretion that the employees have in making sales. Everybody is carded and it goes through the scanner. So I think these actions demonstrate the seriousness with which we take this violation, and we would respectfully request that the resolutions as adopted for the prior to licensees would be adopted in our case as well. We'd be happy to drop any questions that any of you might have.
Okay. Questions, counsel? Yes, Mayor Potemplamming?
You referred to this scanner that you purchased. So every person that orders liquor, their driver's license scanned or ID is scanned? How does that work?
On the first time that they make a purchase. The hotel is, it's kind of like a residence hotel, so we have some of our customers who are there on business and might be there for weeks at a time, and after a while, we do get to know those clients. But otherwise, if it's somebody that we do not recognize and have not seen and aren't guests at the hotel for a length of time, they will be scanned.
Other questions, counsel? Ms. Kerwin?
I'm pleased that that's happened because unlike the previous restaurants, you've had a violation just two years ago, and that's what the concern is. So it sounds like you've put into place things, that employee is no longer there, but certainly you understand this priority in this community to ensure that there are no violations at all, and you sit with a violation in just two short years. So that is a concern.
It's a concern to us as well.
Other questions? Excuse me. Seeing none, then we'll ask for a resolution. We'd like to move the resolution. Mayor Potemplamming?
Resolution regarding MEI Holdings LLC, Troy Hotel Property LLC, doing business as Hotel Homewood Suites. Resolution reads with the last paragraph as be it further resolved that the Troy City Council hereby requires all employees serving alcohol for the licensee to be tips or TAMS trained or trained in another program of similar caliber as determined by the designated representatives of the Troy Police Department. And any employees trained within the last six months of this date are exempt from this training, and that proof of this training be submitted to the Troy Police Department within 90 days.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Moved by Mayor Potemplamming, seconded by Counselman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Palada?
Counselmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Counselmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howarla?
Yeah.
Kirwin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Bloom, before we do the next individual, I need to make a request to the audience. If anyone is here to speak on public comment on items that are on the agenda or not on the agenda, we ask that you go to the kiosk in the hallway and sign up so that we may have your names for the record here. So if you've not done that or came in after the initial beginning of the meeting, that you do that before we come to that section, please. Thank you. Mrs. Bloom?
Thank you, Mayor. The last hearing of this evening is Lebanese Grill. The license is held by Yara Inc., and we have Mr. Sharaf, Abe Sharaf, who is here this evening, and it is my understanding that they are not going to be contesting the violation. This is a little bit different. It's not a decoy situation. In this particular case, on March 22 of 2009, there was a fight on the premises, and they were also charged with permitting a licensed premises to be occupied by persons other than the licensee after hours. And it's my understanding that they are not contesting that these violations occurred. I would also just indicate that the Michigan Liquor Control Commission has adjudicated this, and they were required to pay $300 in administrative costs for this particular situation. And I believe Mrs. Sharaf is here.
Do you have questions, Mrs. Bloom, before we ask the petitioners? Okay, thank you. Yes, come forward. I need to ask you, do you waive your right to the hearing?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, good evening, Councilmen, Councilwoman, ladies and gentlemen, State Attorney. I really appreciate the opportunity, like, to be here in front of you all, like, not to correct this, you know, high-price incident. It happened, you know, just things like, you know, went out of hand that night, and we were trying to bring peace, you know, to the place, like, after that happened, but, you know, it was like, we felt like it was intentional, and it's not that I was renting the place to someone else, like, you know, I was on, like, on-site and myself, and I was managing the whole thing. It's just, we created those types of events, like, you know, we were trying to increase, like, you know, business and, you know, boost, like, you know, business during this tough time, and, you know, obviously, it was like a miscalculation, and it has been, like, you know, a very expensive lesson, and we've paid, like, a significant price for that, and, you know, it's, since then, like, we stopped doing those events, and we just, like, cut it pure, and, you know, no more of those events. So we're still operating the room. We carefully rented to private people and private families, and we were just, you know, we have been there, like, you know, for 12 years, and we never had any problems of that type, and we've been holding the license, you know, for the last 12 years as well, so we have never had any problem. But that night, you know, human beings, it just went out of hand, and, you know, we just took strict measures, and, you know, we stopped those events at all.
Thank you. Let's see if counsel has questions. Counsel members, do you have questions? Press petitioner? Counselman Kirwin, you do? Go ahead.
Go ahead.
You had a very good record up until this incident.
Thank you. Well, it wasn't, it wasn't something like that we tried or we intentionally, you know, did. It's just like, we found out later on, it was intentionally done, like, you know, by other people to hurt our business, and that's why we took straight measures, and like, you know, we cut it, you know, we stopped them completely, you know, since that, since that night.
I want to address just part of the write-up, which talked about having open bottles in the area. That's a concern.
We did have bottle service on the tables that night. I do admit that. It's not that we were doing, what happened that night, like, we, you know, we started that, like, February 14, Valentine's Day, we start, like, you know, just long nights until 2 o'clock, 2:30, like, you know, max. We started having those events, and we just bring people in, and they sit down and drink and eat, and like, you know, under our supervision, of course, and we, that night in particular, we were trying to wrap it up, and the, you know, like, couple of people, like, you know, started disturbing peace. We were trying, we tried, like, you know, very hard to bring peace, like, back to the place, and like, you know, try to finalize everything and just call it, and, but it just happened that we couldn't, and I was myself who called the police of Troy, and I really appreciate that, you know, that the police showed, showed up, like, in a timely manner, and...
Sir, I have just a specific question. We read the reports, but the specific question has to do with those open bottles. Is it your current practice?
No.
To have open bottles available to whomever would be there? That's my question, because that's a striking violation. It's a big concern.
Not, not, you know, like, it was just like, you know, for those types of events, and like, you know, those are, you know, like, completely stopped.
Further questions?
Mayor?
Counselman Howarla?
I'm sorry, I, I guess what I, could you maybe elaborate on what type of events that you used to have, that you're referring to?
Just music and sit-down dinner, that's all.
Is that any different? I mean, I guess what I'm trying to get is, how was your business run before this, and run now, and what changes have you made?
We have two, two parts of the facility. One part is, is a banquet hall, it's like, you know, banquet side, and the other part, like, you know, is a regular dining room. We were, we tried to do those events in the banquet side, like, you know, on Saturday night.
And so you no longer...
No, we no longer do it now.
When, when are your, what are your normal business hours?
11 till 10 or 11 on the weekend.
And the, when were your business hours when this happened?
I'm sorry, when?
But this happened, what was the date again? Last March. What were your business hours a year ago?
Same.
So how did the situation get to the point where at 3:00 AM this was happening?
Well, it started, like, earlier than that, but we were trying to wrap it up and, you know, bring peace to, back to the place, but, you know, things went out of hand, and we, you know, our most worry was, like, you know, to, to, you know, to keep it peaceful again, and, you know, to bring peace back to the place, and that's therefore, like, you know, we called the police to show up and help us move everybody away, like, you know, from the building and all that.
So if I understand what you're saying, there's an event that was happening, and it got rowdy, and you tried to control it, and you couldn't, and so did you or somebody at your facility call the police?
I was the one who called the police, yes. There was a couple other calls, like, you know, who, that misled the police, but, like, you know, I called myself, after all, and I corrected, you know, when the police said, you know, what they, what they were informed of, and I said, no, it wasn't true, and, and I corrected that, and then they showed up.
Could you tell me, other than employees, subsequent to this event happening, when was the latest that anybody has ever been in that facility?
1:00.
1:00. Is that a hard and fast rule now?
I'm sorry, is that what?
Is that a hard and fast rule, meaning that if there's somebody in at 1:00, you ask them to leave?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Further questions? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
We will have a resolution then before us here, and who would like to do a resolution in this matter?
Mayor?
Counselman Slater?
I'll move the resolution, the first one with the last paragraph. I think some of the council members are reluctant because of the seriousness of the incident, but I think you've learned your lesson. I'm hearing that you've changed your policies, and this is not, this, this first started off as a shooting, is that correct?
Those are the misleading calls, like, that were made to the police, but it wasn't the case. It wasn't the case. Like, you know, that's why we, when we, you know, when we knew, like, you know, the, the kind of calls, like, you know, the police had received, and, like, they tried to mislead the police, you know, at that time, you know, we knew that, you know, the whole thing was intentional and to hurt our business and to hurt our family.
Right.
So therefore, like, that's why, like, you know, we, we just stopped them completely.
Well, I think that's what we all want to hear, that this is not going to happen again.
No, it won't.
And I'm looking at your record, and you have a perfect record, except for this.
Thank you. And we will try to keep it as, as perfect as it was after this. It's been like, you know, a very high-price lesson.
Right.
We have learned.
So Counselman Slater, are you moving the resolution? Do you want to read the last paragraph?
I'll read the last paragraph. Be it further resolved that Troy City Council hereby requires that all employees serving alcohol for this licensee be tips or TAMS trained or trained in another program of similar caliber as determined by the designated representative of the Troy Police Department. And any employees trained within the last six months of this date are exempt from this training, and that proof of this training be submitted to the Troy Police Department within 90 days. Okay?
Support? Moved by Counselman Slater, seconded by Counselman Kirwin, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Palada?
Counselmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Counselmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howarla?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
And McGinnis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bloom, are there any...
No, Your Honor, I just wish to publicly thank Officer James Feld, who has been present and has been instrumental in helping us get all of this pulled together, and also the Troy Police Department, who did an excellent job, as usual, with the liquor license investigations.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate your, thank you, Officer Feld. That concludes the public hearing portion of the meeting, and therefore, we go forward with the agenda, and the next section is public comment, and I have two, four, six, seven people who've signed up to speak. So if you wish to speak in the public comment section, I ask that you go out and sign up your name. I'll be calling on those seven people, and they will be allowed the five minutes as indicated in our rules and procedure, the five-minute time limit, which is part of our regular procedure. I will call on them in the order that they've signed up, and that is, and these may be items that are on the agenda, postponed, regular business or consent agenda items. Mike Kerr is the first individual who signed up.
Ladies and gentlemen, city council, thank you very much for being able to speak tonight. One of the reasons I'm here is I like to, for you that have missed the Free Press, Sunny Free Press, the Oakland section, mentions the city of Troy, a man arraigned on burglaries. The man was arrested on Friday night past. He was suspected in 15 burglaries in southeast Michigan. The man was known by Troy Police Department. Lo and behold, they went out, they found him, they followed him, they watched him pick up the rocks, they watched him throw the rocks through the window, and as a matter of fact, arrested. We don't know how much time that saved the city of Troy, but now he's incarcerated in the Oak County Jail and is our best crime prevention spokesperson. He's up there talking to every inmate that he possibly can about how stupid he was to come and mingle with, or come across the sites of the Troy Police Department. It takes more than citizen action, it takes more than a routine patrol to harden a target here and send a message, this is not a place to come and commit crime. This is a prime example of crime prevention at its finest. Counselman Slater was, as a matter of fact, one of the founders of one of the units that was involved in seeking out this individual and doing a proactive approach to crime prevention. And Chief Mayor, were members of the direct patrol unit, at one time made roughly 40 arrests in eight working days. When people are seen committing a crime, and they go to the Oak County Jail, and they whine and cry to all their cellmates about coming to Troy and getting watched, doing a crime, their chances of not being convicted are very slim. And from what I've seen as far as the future of our budget constraints, a couple of these units are going to be the first to fall by the wayside come Jan, or July of 2010. I'm sorry to see that happen, but this is the kind of things we will have to forego if we go back to the service-oriented police department. One of the reasons I'm here tonight is this is the new war on our kids. This is, it's not iced tea, it's beer, 12% alcohol. It's the new rage among kids, because you can practically walk down the street, and someone that's not accustomed to seeing or knowing what this is thinks it's some kind of energy drink or, or, you know, some kind of iced tea drink. It's actually 12% alcohol, like beer's 4%, wine's 7%. This is a new rage amongst teenagers, and some of the people that are out there trying to educate parents, school, people, and civic groups, courses of the Troy Coalition. The Troy Police Department and Troy Coalition are, are in fact, going to have a event here at the Community Center on the 26th at 7:00 PM. It's called Stay Out of My Room. Jerry Schilling's going to be a guest speaker, he's going to speak about getting caught, consequences of those kind of things. Judge Drury from our district court's going to be a speaker. His drug court has one of the least recidivism rates in the entire country, and he's going to speak a little bit about that. If you haven't had an opportunity to hear Stephen Schaefer speak, this is an opportunity for you to do that. Stephen Schaefer was a designated driver. His parents ended up spending roughly $150,000 in defense attorney fees, and he was subsequently convicted of felony, which certainly impaled his, or certainly curtailed his career. He was an excellent student in, in any licensing endeavor in the state of Michigan. It's from 7:00 to 8:00 at the Troy City Hall, it's free to the public, and it's, it's, the invitation is to middle school and high school parents, and anybody else who would like to attend, find out what's going on. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Next, we're going to hear from Barbara Klein.
I should be honest, my name is Barbara Pickens Klein. Before I got here, or before I came in and sat down, I got this from over that area, and it says, "Keeping History, Culture, Art, and Literature Alive in Troy." And of course, it's talking about all what I call the essential services. I find it daunting, counsel, to be in the area of eagles. If you don't understand that you are protecting life, you just did it with making people accountable for alcohol, but you give life with these particular essential services. Educated children may be the only real resource in this American nation. Michigan needs the resources, and Troy has traditionally produced them. I live in what I call the poverty pocket of Troy. There are no castles in my neighborhood. I have been to Rochester Hills, and I know castles. I am distantly related to T. Boone Pickens, an Irish person. I call him the man of La Mancha, as he does speak of windmills. He is unaware of me. I was in the Ferndale High School band. Governor Jamie Blanchard was the band's drum major. I grew up in Oak Park, Michigan. I was a babysitter for Dick and Gladys McLean. He worked for Harley Earl and created the Firebird, now located in the Henry Ford Museum. I glory in Minoro Yamazaki and Harley Earl. As far as I know, am aware, they worked across the street, so very near to here. I know where Fred Gassau's farm was. There are some who know the incredible past of Big Beaver, and with me can cry for what has been befallen this great city. However, the buildings will be mothballed, and from them will again erupt beautiful butterflies. They will not be bombed, and they existed. That's better than to have never having them built in the first place. Toyota has taught us something. We assume the Motown of our past was dead, fun. It is not. Michigan will survive. There is much potential in this state. We are not perched on the San Andreas Fault. We will not be paying for that wreckage. We will not be paying for the rebuilding of Galveston. However, be aware, there are those who will not invest in neighborhoods where citizens live, who would allow the jewels of a city to be compromised. I never thought I would walk away from a mortgage. It is now a thought gaining in popularity. Those who thought they were in the know, K-N-O-W, weren't. There are those who believe NO to be particularly anal. I believe it to be uneducated. I was impressed with the last Troy council meeting. Heads did not roll, perhaps eyes did. The citizens of Troy are refined and intelligent. It takes a village to raise a child. It takes a village to sustain a life. None of the Ten Commandments talks of taxes. Jesus said, "Render unto Caesar." There are those who believe. They will be insulated from crime. Crime is less in an educated society. Education gives a student hope. The French Revolution happened when there was no hope. Some do not study history. Those are not in the know, and will eventually suffer greatly for their lack of insight, even as the inciter riot over what they don't, what they deem unfair in life. Essential services, that is what we will be losing. I would create the signs to say Y period for yes, E period essential, S period services. Maturity has reigned in the city, in the Troy Council. Troy is a great city. I don't want or need it to be referred to as a has-been. By Troy, the businesses, banks, and realtors had best get busy publishing information and teaching dollars, cents, C-E-N-T-S, and cents, S-E-N-S-E, or it, Troy, will vanish as did Camelot. Who can afford that? I can't. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Don Barnes.
Good evening, counsel. Good evening, Madam Mayor. Who do we listen to? We have some major decisions to make going forward. Who are we going to listen to to help us make those decisions? Troy Citizens United? I don't think so. I recently went to the Troy Citizens United webpage and saw something quite amazing. Troy Citizens United are begging the city of Troy residents for money so they can pay their bills. This is the same group that has been railing against the management of the city of Troy for months for asking for a mileage rate hike due to declining property values through no fault of their own. They have been vehemently criticizing city management and city employees, accusing them of mismanagement of the city's finances, and yet here is Troy Citizens United on their website with their tin cup in hand, panhandling for spare change because they have completely mismanaged their own finances. So instead of the city residents giving their tax dollars to the city of Troy to help pay for our police department, our fire department, our library, et cetera, Troy Citizens United wants you to give your tax dollars to them so they can pay off their own debt, a problem they created entirely on their own. On top of that, they accuse the city of Troy of asking for 29% more of your tax dollars. Here they are on their website, asking for 30% of your tax dollars. You can't make this stuff up. You call this, to call this hypocrisy would be a gross understatement. We have serious problems here in Troy, we need serious people. Troy Citizens United, your 15 minutes are up. Again, who do we listen to going forward? We know it's not Troy Citizens United. How about Counselman Howarla? At the last city council meeting, Mr. Howarla voted against offering tax breaks to a local business that is bringing much-needed jobs and property tax revenue to the city of Troy. He has also voted against using them in the past. Those, that doesn't make a lick of sense. Those tax breaks are one of the best tools we have for attracting businesses to Troy and jobs and tax revenue they bring with them. Is Mr. Howarla familiar with the terms flat world, our global economy? Does Mr. Howarla know that we are competing for valuable manufacturing jobs, not only with other cities and states, but also with other countries? Our unemployment rate is the highest in the United States. We have lost millions of valuable, good-paying jobs to countries like China and India. The residents of Troy need these new businesses and the jobs they create. Does Mr. Howarla answer to the citizens of Troy or his own narrow ideology? Mr. Howarla, along with the citizens of Troy, along with Troy Citizens United, have both spoken out many times against the transit center, calling it the transit center to nowhere, a boondaga, and completely misrepresenting the cost to the city and its residents. Nowhere, a boondoggle, and completely misrepresenting the cost to the city and its residents. Here's what Warren Buffett had to say about railroads in his annual letter to investors just last month. "It is inconceivable that our country will realize anything close to its full economic potential without us possessing first-class electricity and railroad systems. We will do our part to see that they exist." So who do we listen to? Mr. Hauerlag and Troy Citizens United or Warren Buffett? Or better yet, how about the city council members and the City of Troy management that share the same vision as Warren Buffett and understand that rail systems are our future and necessary if we, here in Michigan and the City of Troy, are ever going to realize our own full economic potential? The same people who also voted for and supported offering tax breaks to attract new businesses to Troy and their much-needed jobs. They are the voices we need to listen to as we look for answers. They are the voices we need in solving the huge problems we face going forward. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Richard Peters.
I'm going to talk about health care a little bit. First of all, personally, I'd like to see that the Office of Price Administration be reconstituted in the federal level. But if that doesn't, then I would probably come out in favor of the public option because I really don't see how else we're going to control this unless maybe the state insurance commissioner can maybe enforce the Consumer Protection Act against these insurance companies that they're price gouging. And finally, I'd like to say, last time I was here talking about stadium, and I meant to include all those in that, so that's all. Thank you, Madam.
Our next speaker is Mr. Paul Beck.
Mayor, Council, I think there's still a lot of hot issues going on here, and I'm going to forego any other comment at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Janice Daniels is our next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. Zurlag staff. The previous speaker was actually a strong advocate for low broad-based taxes rather than having the government pick and choose winners and losers through tax breaks. So I would encourage more of his passion towards broad-based tax reductions for the stimulus of business. There has also been some discussion within the community that the Troy Citizens United Group now has a mandate to decide how to take the steps to balance the budget. I think that in acknowledging the good intentions of our fellow citizens, you would agree with me that the mandate is with the city council, the city management, and your staff to structure the budget. The Troy Citizens United Group is an advocacy organization who's, is a group of concerned citizens who believe in their constitutional duty to hold government officials accountable when they see that the choices and the methods that are out of line with the goals of fiscal responsibility, lower taxes, and providing an environment where trade and commerce can flourish. All we can do is recommend, and I'll remind everyone, that a key component of our Vote No campaign was a presentation of a list of areas that we believe need to be examined in an effort to find waste that is inherent in large organizations, both public and private. I'll also remind everyone that we consistently insisted that we also want safe streets and that we also love our library and community center, and that we do not want anyone to lose their jobs, not in the public or private sector, and that's why we so strongly advocated the position of no new taxes. And I would hope that with regard to the refuse millage increase that is being discussed, you'll be so kind as to explain to us the breakdown of internal costs that we incur in this area of spending, how these costs are allocated. And in the spirit of the overwhelming majority of taxpayers who do not want a millage increase, I would ask that you initiate an advisory vote in August to ask the citizens of Troy if they would agree to a refuse millage increase. We do value our city's services. I would think that most people agree that Tringali does a good job, and we understand that certain costs are fixed in spite of revenue reductions, but all we are asking for is a good-faith effort by our city management to show us the money, so to speak, show us the cost breakdown, and then ask us before you raise our taxes. In fact, using this line of thinking, I would like to respectfully make one more suggestion for your consideration. I think it would behoove you to take a page out of L. Brooks Patterson's playbook on how to run government efficiently. Under his leadership, Oakland County has achieved a three-year balanced budget by reducing the cost of government without having to ask for a tax increase. This was accomplished by his going to his department heads with a budget task plan. Each department head was given the task of reducing costs within their own department. He did this simply because it is the department heads who know better than anyone else where the waste and potential misuse of funds is occurring. They know even better than the city manager, and so they are the people who we must turn to for budget restructuring. For example, Sheriff Mike Bouchard was given the task of reducing his budget by around twenty-one million dollars. I'm sure that wasn't an easy task, but he accomplished his goal once he was given the task. Our department heads need to be assigned budget-cutting tasks with a date certain for recommendations that are consistent with the wishes of the community, and those wishes include a functioning library, a profitable community center, appropriate staffing levels with realistic compensation, health care, and pension packages, and low taxation for the citizens of this great city of Troy. And you have my best wishes for success in balancing our city budget. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Linda Keimer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council.
Do you want to move the mic over or move over to the mic? There you go. Thank you.
I'm here speaking on behalf of several citizens of Troy. We listened to Councilman Fleming speak at the last council meeting. He responded to citizens' remarks chastising him for putting his name on the Vote No mailings and literature and demanding accountability. He told us that he did not give anyone permission to use his name on the flyer and didn't take any position on the millage. He also said that he contacted Mr. Zurlag and told him he did not give permission for anyone to use his name. The question to Mr. Fleming is, did any member of the Troy Citizens United contact you at any time and ask you what your position was on the millage? Did any member ask you if they could put your name on the no flyer they handed out in mail? Also, why didn't you advise the citizens of Troy at the council meeting prior to the millage vote that you did not condone or give anyone permission to use your name on any flyer or propaganda mailings? Your name was on the no literature at the February seventh show-and-tell at the Starbucks at Big Beaver and John R., sponsored by Eisenbacher and Lambert. Mr. Fleming, if you did not approve your name to be on that literature, why didn't you tell us then instead of waiting till after the millage vote was over? There are several members of the Troy Citizens United in the audience tonight. Maybe you can ask them, or they can tell us who gave them permission to add your name to that propaganda. It's time to call them out for distributing and publicizing false information. Mr. Fleming, if you recall, your name was also on similar literature during the city council race, where your supporters attacked several council candidates. During the night of the election, you told several people you did not give permission for anyone to use your name on that literature. You were questioned, why then did the flyer have the words, "Paid for by friends to elect Wade Fleming for city council"? At that time, you told people that you did not condone such activity, nor did you give them permission to do so. As friends of yours, they should have known that. On Monday, November ninth, you were sworn in with the new council members. You again addressed us at that time and told us that you did not approve of any mailings with your name on them that contained personal attacks against the other council candidates. You even apologized. Not to single you out, we know that Mr. Hauerlag was also a part of this campaign strategy both times. However, Mr. Hauerlag has not denied nor apologized for this, that I am aware. Mr. Hauerlag, please correct me if I am wrong. Again, we ask you, Mr. Fleming, why you would allow people to use your name on slanderous mailings that you don't approve of or give permission to print? Do you address this with your supporters and backers? We're well aware that the people that supported you for city council are the same people that supported the No campaign. The only thing different is possibly the committee names, but the leaders are the same people. Are we going to repeatedly have you apologize to us because letters and or flyers are sent out with your name on them, either supporting or not supporting something, and then have you come back and tell us that you did not condone such a thing? It's time to stop these organizations that use false and dirty campaigns. I have personally experienced the tactics of these groups. You, Mr. Fleming, have an opportunity now to let the citizens know how you feel about this type of malicious campaign. You can make a difference. You can start to mend the divide that this, that has come about between the citizens of Troy as a result of the practices of these groups. You can't keep sitting on the fence. I hope you show the signs of a true leader, one who puts importance on ethics. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John With.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't want to go too much into these personal attacks that have been on Mr. Fleming, Mr. Hauerlag tonight, but first let me just correct the record for a few things. The first speaker who attacked Mr. Hauerlag, let's look at Mr. Hauerlag's record. He opposed Sanctuary Lake Golf Course, which has become a boondoggle. He opposed the two thousand eight pay increases, which we clearly can't afford. He's opposing right now the Transit Center, which we clearly can't afford. Mr. Hauerlag showed incredible wisdom, and we would be very wise to follow his lead on the city council. And then the other attack on Troy Citizens United, I think this is once again just sour grapes and bitterness from the yes voters who clearly are out of touch with the voters of the City of Troy. Sixty-three percent of the voters of the City of Troy, over sixty-three percent, sent a clear message, we don't want a twenty-nine percent tax increase. So really, we have two choices now. Those, including several on this council who supported the tax increase, can either go ahead and continue to be bitter and look towards the past, or we can move towards the future. I think it's time to move towards the future. And how do we have to move towards the future? Well, it's very clear. We have to change the way we do business. The old ways of doing things simply do not work. The excuse is that, well, that's the way we've always done it. That's the tradition. That's got to go out the window. Things have to change. Every department, every, every service, every part of city government needs to be looked at, examined, made more efficient, cut costs wherever possible, and look, and look at every service and say, is this necessary, or is this something we could pass on? Why, then, emphasis of focusing on protecting core services and trying to avoid layoffs? After all, capital projects such as the Transit Center or trails or things like that, they might be nice luxuries, but they're not core services. They're not preserving any jobs. Let's be clear. Troy Citizens United was clear, we do not want layoffs. We want to preserve jobs. And how do we preserve jobs? Well, we need the employees, and especially the employee unions, to get realistic in wages and benefits. Okay? Just because I always had this salary, or we always, or someone always had these benefits, doesn't mean they deserve them forever. We need to come to the new economic reality that so many of our residents in the private sector have faced, reduced benefits, reduced wages. Those things need to be looked at. I mean, Oakland County's done it. Think about Oakland County. Three-year balanced budget, no layoffs, no service cuts. How have they done it? Five percent across-the-board pay cuts, and Brooks Patterson down to the lowest level employee. It's time to change the way we do business as a city. So please, I ask you, please, as we start this new budget process, let's not get stuck in our old ways. Let's move forward, and let's look at every single aspect of city government and see how we can become more efficient, because that's what the residents gave you a mandate on February twenty-third. They said, no more business as usual. Change the way you run government and become more efficient without a tax increase. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Audrey Zembruski.
Hi, I'm Lucky Zembruski, and I've been sitting back there and watching everybody look away from the people coming up here to talk. The first time I ever came to a council meeting, it happened to me. It was during the time that they were changing to, to change the, all the parks to protection against the people, you know, so they couldn't build and do this and that and the other. And I came to it, and I remember seeing Tony Pallada sit up there and talking to somebody in there, and nobody listened, except that, at that time, it was Martin, the lawyer. And I thought to myself, you know what? I'm going to get up and say something that I didn't say. So I turned around, and I came up, and I said, okay, I'm going to tell all of you people right now, you don't look at the people that you're talking to, but I'm going to warn you right now. Did you ever hear of a, in a city of, where Dearborn Heights is, that there was a big picketing that went on one time? And at that time, nobody, they said, yeah, we heard about it. Well, I did it. I organized it, and I took hand, and I put things out, that you couldn't get things out of schools, the city couldn't run the city, and the school board couldn't run the school board. And I was willing to do it again here, just to stop them from rezoning my park, because ours is a private park. Well, we don't, you don't look at people when they're talking to you, and that's really a shame, because they come up here, they come to the meetings, and they should come more often and say something to you. And I know I gave Mr. Zurlag a paper at Vouch College, and I said, John, if you start with this, let's start with the seven unions. Get a ten percent cut, freeze it for two years. My husband had his wages cut many times and frozen, and I said, and then start with getting rid of the buildings that we own. Why does the DPW have to have a house on, for meetings, on Crooks Road? Why does the police department have to have a house on Lurinoy for meetings? They have a, they have a big building. So does the DPW. We don't need, why does the, why do we have cabins up north for the volunteer fire department? I call Rochester. They got a volunteer fire department, and guess what? They don't have cabins for them. They get a pension, and that's what they look forward to, is only that pension. But we got cabins for them to have vacations, and we're paying it as taxpayers. Fifty thousand dollars go to each building, six of them. That's three hundred thousand dollars. Chuck that off the board. Let's start there. Let's start with the unions. Let's start with everybody, and let's get down. And I can say about unions, because my father was a head of human.
Mrs. Zembruski, please don't shout, okay?
Well, you know what? That's the only way you can see people look their heads up and look at somebody, is when you shout out. And to pick on Mr. Fleming and Mr. Hauerlag, I think it is really rude of these people because they didn't like that the no votes won. Well, I was a no voter, and I'm on the advisory board, and you know what? I will still fight for this library, for everything that they want, whether they get it or not, but I will stand there and fight for them. But I was a no vote, not twenty-nine percent. My taxes have gone up almost every year that I've lived here, and that's thirty years of taxes, and I'm taxed to death.
That concludes those that signed up on this item, and so that concludes the public comments. And we will, councils usually take a break at this time and then go to regular business. And if there's some students that need their papers signed, this is the time to come up and get those. Okay? Take a ten-minute break. Take a 10-minute break. I had a request from council members. They had, do you have any questions of clarification?
I guess.
Councilwoman Kerwin, did you?
I guess. Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes. Councilwoman Kerwin?
Assistant manager. One of the suggestions was that every department head should look at a budget and then come back with recommendations. I'm wondering if that's ever been done.
That was the first thing we did. First, I met with Mr. Lamorato and Mr. Murphy when he was here, and then we met with every department head.
Is that just the case for this year, or?
That's done every year.
Mr. Lamorato?
I'm here in City Council. That is our normal process. It's always been our process. The departments put together their budget. They need explanations on any kind of major deviation up or down in their budget. At this time of the year during budget review, I'm kind of hated probably around City Hall, because there are a lot of, there's a lot of reductions being made to the budget. So it's our normal process. It's nothing new. It's probably budgeting 101, I think.
The second question I have, again, for the city manager, the other suggestion that came, a strong suggestion, was that every department should be looked at, how to become more efficient, how to streamline. Would you respond to that as well?
Sure. We started doing that in August of 2009 by looking at every department and seeing whether it could be eliminated, consolidated in-house, consolidated with other municipalities, privatized and/or regionalized. And we hired an outside consultant essentially to give us a more global perspective. We used Dick Carlisle of Carlisle Associates. He's already made two or three periodic updates to the city council. In terms of our efforts, we have looked at almost every department, and I plan on having Mr. Carlisle come back in conjunction with staff about every four weeks, every other council meeting, if you will, to give us an update. And we'll be doing that until we're finished, and that's also being done in conjunction with a three-year balanced budget that we're preparing.
Mr. Lamorato?
I'm here in City Council. I also add that this is not the first year that we've started looking at efficiencies. This has been many, several years ago. We've started looking at that when we were forming City Council, that we are heading for some difficult times. As you know, we've had 63 positions that have been reduced over the last five years. And we've already, at least for the last five years, we've been looking at ways to become more efficient, and even before that term.
And that included the Zucker Report, which is available?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilman Howardak?
I'm curious as to, and perhaps Mr. Lamorato would be the best one to answer this, but if anybody over in City Hall here is aware of any voluntary donations or additions to taxes that have been submitted subsequent to the election through Treasury?
Donations?
Mayor and City Council, I'm not aware of any that were voluntarily made.
But citizens are, there is a way for citizens to voluntarily donate to the city or contribute sums in addition to their taxes. Is that correct?
Mayor and City Council, anybody could do whatever. If they want to write a check out to the city of Troy over and above their taxes, I'm sure we'd take the funds.
And if the city manager would be so kind, if that starts to happen, would you be kind enough to provide us with information detailing those amounts?
Certainly.
Thank you. And then I have a question for the city attorney. If one did not want to pay his or her property taxes and didn't do so, what would be the repercussions of such actions, or in this case, inaction?
I'm assuming that you're speaking of the real property, taxes on the real property?
Yes, right.
Then eventually, there would be a lien on the property that would have to be paid off in the event that there was any action or any sales of the property.
In other words, it's mandatory.
Absolutely.
I know this seems rhetorical, but I'm just trying to make a comparison here.
Yes.
It is mandatory, correct?
Yes.
And likewise, if somebody did not make a donation when they were asked to make a donation to a nonprofit or political organization, there is no law against it now, is there?
I'm not sure of what...
Well, there was a gentleman that came to the podium and was comparing an organization that was requesting donations to the city and taxes. I mean, those are two separate things, aren't they not? I mean, you have to pay taxes, but you can or cannot make a donation depending on your own free will. Is that correct?
I'm not sure that that calls for illegal lands, sir, but yes, that is...
I'm just trying to make a point that I thought the claim was preposterous.
Further clarification from public comment that council needs at this point? Seeing none, then we'll go on with regular business. First is H.3, which is ratification of an emergency 24-inch water main repair of Rochester and South Road and South Boulevard. Well, I've seen that one many times. Go get it for my gas. Could we have a resolution?
I'll move a resolution.
Moved by Mayor Protem Fleming. Do we have a second?
Support.
And seconded by Councilwoman Slater, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion?
I would...
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Madam Mayor, to someone who could respond on staff.
You have a question?
I do.
Yes, go ahead. Ask Mr. Zerlag, and he can throw it to whoever he wants.
We happened to find that there was a leak in the main because of work that was being done. I'm wondering what this says about any of our, the rest of our infrastructure, if there's anything that we should be concerned about.
I don't think there's anything to be alarmed about or concerned about, but Mr. Richnak would know more about the matter than I would.
Thank you.
Okay?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. That corner, South Boulevard and Rochester Road, underneath the ground is a very busy area. There's all kinds of AT&amp;T cables going through there, along with just about any utility that you can imagine, gas, electric. And Detroit's Water and Sewer Department had transmission lines above ours. We basically, at the time, knew that they had a leak because of their facilities, but were unaware of what we had underneath. That particular line was a structure that was put in so many years ago, and it's concrete with a steel pipe on the inside. Nothing would tell us until we got down there exactly that there needed a repair. But as put in the report, that section of pipe really supplies a very large area of the city of Troy. So it was in our best interest to make sure that it got repaired at the time.
I guess my concern is, I have no problem with the resolution.
Okay.
What my question is, should we have a concern about our infrastructure in general or along that line?
No, I don't think that we need to have a general concern about the water main system in the city of Troy overall. You're going to find points of interest where you have infrastructure that has more stress on it than other areas. You take and have an underground pipe that's supposed to protect it, you get down to the end, it's like having a boat ramp. You know, there's a point there where there's a little bit more stress on it, and that's the point where it actually cracked. So no, I don't think we have to worry about that entire section. Basically, it was at the edge of the road where you have traffic, and then the rest of the infrastructure, and there's a meter pit down there, and it's just a very busy place, and nothing to be concerned about long-term.
Thank you. Could we have, we have the resolution on the table. Any other questions? The vote, Mrs. Pallada?
Mayor Schilling.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Howardak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
And Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. The consent agenda, anyone want to remove any items? I'd like I-4B. Any others? Any others exempted? Yes, Councilwoman Kerwin?
We resolve that all items as presented on the consent agenda are hereby approved, as presented with the exception of items 4, I-4B, which shall be considered after consent agenda items as printed.
Support. Moved by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve all the consent agenda items with this vote, except for I-4B, which we'll take up right after this vote. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Pallada?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howardak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
And Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. I-4B, I asked for, to ask a question, which I had asked before the meeting, but I thought that the rest of council and general public should know. This is a bid to award to the low bidder mowing and landscaping maintenance services as needed, if necessary. And the reason I asked about it is that I had been asked whether city employees could do the mowing as they used to do previously at a better rate. If we have an opportunity for them to bid on it, you know, because we're doing all this privatization kind of thing, they still would have that opportunity. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that this resolution would not preclude that. Okay, thank you.
It will not.
Okay, thank you. Therefore, I move I-4B.
Support.
And moved by the chair, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we approve I-4B.
Mayor?
Discussion? Councilman Howardak?
I'm sorry, I'm, could somebody explain to me? It seems to me, is this in addition to what we've normally been doing over the years?
Mr. Zerlag, Matt Con, Mrs. Anderson? Mrs. Anderson?
Thank you. This particular award allows additional mowing. It has the mowing of all public grounds in it. In the past, we have had the mowing of the street islands and fire stations. This allows the mowing of the parks if needed, which is not the way the bid has been set up in the past.
Okay, I wanted to make sure I was on the same page, because it does also include the areas that we've been doing for many years.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, Mrs. Pallada, vote?
Councilmember Howarlag?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we go to memorandums and future council agenda items. And, anyone have any questions on that? Council referrals, there is an item that is on the agenda that was submitted by Councilmember Beltrameen.
Mayor.
Councilman Howarlag?
Just wanted to back up one step. I did have a question about J-2B.
J-2B, yes.
And wanted to see if, I didn't necessarily need an answer this evening, but I was curious as to the timeframe for that, if that was something that had gone through Troy Days Committee? And if the individuals who, I think four years ago it may have been, who had proposed providing the Troy Days through a nonprofit organization separate from the city, if they have been approached about continuation of services to essentially get it off our books?
Mr. Zerlack?
Sure, I'll start, and then those that were more involved can certainly finish it for me. That would be primarily, I think, either Carol Anderson and/or Cindy Stewart. But essentially, when this was brought to my attention, I wanted to make it a green item so that council knew it was coming, could answer some, could ask questions here now, we'd have answers for you next time. I spoke with Cindy Stewart, and we're also going to the Troy Days Committee to get their input on this as well. We should have all that wrapped up in time for the next city council meeting. So we'll have that answer for you, Mr. Howarlag, as well as any other questions that may come up tonight or sometime during the next week.
Does that answer your question?
It answers the one part. The other part is the members who had been on the Troy Days Committee at the time, and again, I don't have the year, but I'm thinking it was about four years ago, who resigned essentially en masse when their proposal was turned down. If they could be approached again to gauge their interest, or perhaps they have some ideas about how to continue on with some sort of a festival, whether it be Troy Days or call it something else that would not be run by the city, and if that interest is still there.
We just have the, essentially, the number of hours that we allocate supplanted by volunteers, essentially?
And I'd like to give a comment with regard that I believe when they came forward with that proposal, it was not that they wanted to do it completely without any city involvement at all. They just wanted to do it as had been done for many years, but have it be a separate committee. So I don't think they've explored it with the option of not having the city involved. And there's always been some costs involved that the city hasn't incurred. And then some of the costs have been reimbursed when they receive enough funds that come into it after expenses are taken off. And so I don't know whether they'd even be interested anymore in doing it. That's just my comment.
I know that we're looking at, with parks and public works, they average about 1,300 staff hours for the current of them. And we're not going to have that type of staff power anymore.
And then there was the expense of that was delineated by the police department.
Right, yeah, that was the next comment. Police department also had almost well over $11,000 in overtime wages to staff the event.
Councilwoman Kerwin?
The other thing that played on some years was when there was rain, and then cars parked. There were turf issues and resolving all of that to make the park as it was before. That ended up being an expense. But I'm sure all this will come back, if the intention is to have the green item, but I'd appreciate that. It's not in every year, some years where it's dry and there isn't a problem, it's easier, but some of the years where there's been rain, there's been quite a bit of damage.
We'll answer any question to help you make your decision.
And then this will come forward?
My intent is to make this a regular business item next council meeting. That's three weeks from tonight.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mayor Protem Fleming?
Just to reiterate what Councilman Howarlag was saying, I beg you to remember that, I don't think it was four years ago, probably less. But as I understood the approach from those people, they were wanting to sort of privatize it, take it on their arm to do it. I don't know what that entails, and again, if they were even interested. I know you're meeting with the Troy Days Committee, which is a great first step, but if that doesn't pan out, then I agree, maybe we should look at an option of someone else taking over outside the city and see if we can still have some type of festival. They may not even be interested, but I wouldn't take that off the table. Consider that, resurrect that discussion.
Further discussion? Okay, then we'll go to council referrals. There's an item that was referred by Councilwoman Beltrameen, but she knew she was not going to be here at the meeting because she's at the NLC Congressional Conference meeting in Washington. Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yeah. I thought Councilwoman Beltrameen did an excellent job of laying out suggestions here for a way forward to officially ask for funding, you know, in our 2010, 2011 budget. And I think she thought it out very well. I don't know that we need a resolution tonight. I think we need to wait until she's here and can speak directly to it, because she spent all the time on this and researched. But I did have some conversation with her. And I'm in agreement with her, I think that we do need to involve citizens in the city. And I don't think we're giving false hope. I think it would be doing an injustice if we did not allow citizens to offer suggestions in some organized format for saving the library and other venues and so forth. I think we need to go down that path. But I would prefer to delay this and not have a resolution tonight, but leave it on the table, but make management aware that this is a direction that personally I would like to see in the budget. But we'll act on it when Councilwoman Beltrameen returns, would be my recommendation. Can we do that, is that...
Mr. Zerlack?
Mrs. Beltrameen spoke to me about this matter. I think she spoke to Mr. Lamorato as well. And we have both told, we have both indicated at that time, both John and myself, that we thought it was important for a decision by council at this meeting, because we're essentially using all the fund balance in fiscal year 10/11 without a six-figure allocation for a study of some sort. It was my understanding that it's somewhere six figures, that's $100,000 or $250,000, I don't know. But, so if council wants to entertain that, then we can, you know, we're taking the fund balance down to 15%. Perhaps you might want to do something to cancel a future capital project. That would be up to the council. But some direction would be good tonight, similar to the direction I received last Monday when we spoke about having a three-year budget. And if there was going to be any delay or expunging of capital projects that were considered nonessential, that we use those monies essentially to delay layoffs in the public safety area two or three years from now. That's all up to you.
Would you clarify for me again? She's talking about a six-figure budget for this item?
I don't want to speak on...
In the conversation? I didn't get that from her memo, but I didn't get a cost figure. She just said a portion of the undesignated reserve funds. My other question is that I asked for staff, and I'd like to have it then for the time of either we have a study session or discuss, if we're going to discuss this item at the next meeting, to track and estimate this information that I asked for in my, I asked for the total cost for all boards and committees and a breakdown of expenditures, the, also the time allotment for staff and volunteers. And for example, tonight, there were, in those presentations I did at the beginning, they indicated about how much time those people volunteered. We did get the total number of citizens currently serving on boards and committees, and that is 162 individual active members on various boards and committees. This does not include those members serving on multiple boards, so some people serve on more than one. So we have been getting citizen input for any years that I've been involved in the City of Troy and served on committees before I was elected to council in 1981. So since the middle '70s, I know that we've had citizen input. Many of those committees discuss regularly items such as parks and recreation and the community center. We have the library board, in addition to the Friends of the Troy Public Library, which is a separate organization. We have the Historical Commission, as well as the Historical Society, which is a separate individual. We have a lot of groups that already address things and give input and can ask questions about items that are, would be budgetary concerns in the proper time, the proper format. And we have staff facilitating at, you know, for the meetings. We received a long list of boards and committees and their city representative who sits with them when they meet. So that's some of my concern, is that the allocation of funds for something of that nature, when we are asking for citizen input on a regular basis for years and years and years, and we have a shortage of funds, and this council has said that the core services need the funding, most important. I'd rather see the funding go for those, to keep that intact as much as possible. So that's my input.
I can't...
You answer input.
Sure, right, thank you. And in response to the questions, I can't speak with authority on any specific number, but we spoke about six figures. I don't know if there was a conversation that, John, that you had that was more specific than six figures.
Any others, Councilman Howarlag?
Just to follow up on some of those comments about boards and committees, I think that in order to be fair, that it would, you know, since we're offering employee groups an opportunity to meet the challenge, then I would say we can do that with the committees as well. And they may, you know, there may be a committee that meets, and they wonder why they meet so often. And they may also be willing to do certain things that require less staff time or less staff resources. There are certain committees that, you know, even if they meet less frequently, I think are important. I mean, you look at a committee like the Senior Citizens Group that provides a kind of a conduit, if you will, between the senior citizens community, which is the heavy user, the community center, and parks and recreation. And you can do that perhaps through less staff resources. But anyway, the gist of it is, if we get feedback from those boards and committees, and even from the staff member liaisons, maybe that they would have a better idea of how to address it, and the staff liaisons may have a good idea of which boards to combine in the best functional way as well.
And I thought we're going to have a study session on boards and committees at some point, after we get the, weren't we waiting until we got the privatization report?
The initial plan that we spoke about was to go through the departments first and then look at boards and committees. That was our, that was our intent. Again, I think in a couple of weeks, I should have talking with John and Mark and Dick, essentially, we get together all the time, at least an indication of when we'll have an analysis for each department.
Okay.
We're doing about one, about one at a time. And it, you know, it would be difficult for us to take a look at two at a time based on what we've set up, you know, developing specifications, going out for bid, having interviews with the same people that do the interviews, that do the specifications, that do the evaluation, that makes the recommendation.
Councilman Slater?
I also want to commend Councilwoman Beltrameen for doing this. She put a lot of work into this, but I just don't see any way that we could make a decision tonight without having a number. And I don't think anybody should speak for her. And I don't see any way that we can do this tonight. So I'm in favor of putting it off until she returns.
Our first meeting is April, the day after Easter? The first Monday after Easter?
Yes.
Is there still even enough time?
Well, we're going to proceed with the budget without this in there, and then you can tell us to modify something or take something away. That's your prerogative always.
That was going to be my suggestion. Just continue forward.
Right. And could I have my data, you think, by the meeting in April?
Yes.
And, you know, if we don't have it tracked a certain way, they could, we could estimate. I'm just looking for comparison numbers.
Sure. And I can start the process as well, have staff talk to the departments about possible consolidation efforts and so forth. We can do some things in time.
Okay. Councilwoman Kerwin?
Just referenced something that the city manager said earlier, which was regarding capital. Would we put off something in terms of a capital project? And I have big concerns about that. In our packet tonight, we have the road report. And the road report says, right, the headline below the new chair, the continuing chair, points out, "Our COC issues three-year financial plan for 2011 through 2013, a three-year budget. The future looks grim. The decline coupled with dramatic increases in nearly all the costs associated with maintaining roads have already hobbled our COC, causing a 14% reduction in staff just since 2007 and reductions in the level of services provided in nearly all areas." I would think now is not the time to be putting off capital projects, particularly in terms of roads, which we've heard from this table, is imperative.
If I may, just because this is going to be a budget year unlike any other that I've experienced, and I'm an old guy. I'm sure it's going to be unlike any you've experienced as well. And it has many salient points to it that's going to affect the look of the city. And one of them is roads, our roads, excuse me. I met with, for over a couple of hours, today's Monday, last week, with Mark Miller and John Lamorato, as well as Steve Van Dett, our city engineer, and Bill Houdery, our deputy city engineer. We spoke about major and local roads for this coming budget, a three-year budget and a five-year look, that's what I want to give all of you. And in Troy, we've been fortunate in the past, because we have many of our major roads be under the jurisdiction of the Oakland County. And we have spent more money, we as a city, on county roads than the county has spent on county roads in Troy. We also maintain snow on county roads and subsidize the county in that respect. I wish there was some plenum government I could have subsidize us. We could have a little bit easier time as well. John R. is horrible, and John R. is a county road. The county is not going to engage in slab replacements. They don't have the money for that. Yet the City of Troy engages in slab replacements for our major roads. So I'm going to be asking you, do you want those roads to essentially be in worse condition than they're going to be, inadequate? Because that's all the county can afford. And if the answer is no, then I'm going to ask where the money's going to come from to fix the county roads. It's all general capital. These are huge questions that you're going to be faced with this coming budget cycle. And my comment about taking money out of capital for a study on if there's a way to find different revenue streams for keeping the library open, that was merely an example, it was not a recommendation. And I'm going to be getting, I've asked for a memorandum from the engineering department, as well as Mr. Miller, that explains all this, you know, that'll identify all the county roads that we have in Troy. I've asked them to let me know how we've subsidized Oakland County in the past in terms of road construction and reconstruction and maintenance, how their roads look in terms of poor, adequate, good, or fair compared to our roads. I've also asked, because I, and I'm not positive, but I believe this, I believe that the Act 51 monies that is received by Oakland County for their roads in Troy is more than what they spend in their roads in Troy. And if that's the case, I'm... And if that's the case, I want to ask Oakland County if we can have jurisdiction of those roads, so we can obtain the Act 51 monies. Chances are, the answer's going to be, yes, John, we take money from Troy and put it somewhere else, perhaps in the townships, and no, you can't have the Act 51 monies. But as manager, I'm going to ask that of the county to see. And I'm not, I asked that when I was manager the first time, I asked that when I was assistant manager the first time, the first, those two times, the answer was no. I'm gonna ask again. But again, this is something that you have to take a look at to see what kind of roads you want to have that are county roads, that are not going to be corrected to our standards. And then where's the money gonna come from?
I'm glad you brought this up, Mr. Zerlag, because I was gonna bring it up at some point. Remember when we had the snow removal contract on the agenda recently? And I commented about the fact that even though we contract with the county and we plow their roads that are within our city, and because we do it better and at a better rate, and, and people expect that, and, but we don't, we aren't reimbursed completely for that. There's money that comes from our budget that covers the rest of the cost. Then we have, what you just spoke about, is the actual maintenance of the road and improvement of the roads, and the money that comes to do those. You know, people have stood at this microphone many times and said how wonderful the county is, and how they have a balanced budget for the three years and all that, what a wonderful job they've done. They're not paying their fair share on the roads. I think it's time we hold the county road commission and the county to their feet to the fire and say, these are your roads, either give us the jurisdiction and the money that, that we can get to do it the way it should be done, or you do it, and we'll send all the complaints to you about the roads.
Mayor.
Mr. Zerlag, would you comment on that? And I'll call on Mr. Councilman Harlan.
I agree with what you said. We do subsidize Oakland County for snow maintenance. And again, that's something that we have to take a look at during budget sessions, how we want to handle that as well. And I'm also concerned about money spent by the county for county drain maintenance in the city of Troy. We spend money every year on maintaining county drains.
Right. Thank you. Councilman Harlan?
I just wanna be, make sure I'm on the same page as you. Are you referring to Oakland County or the RCOC?
I'm referring to the Oakland County Road Commission.
Right. So, and that's under the jurisdiction of?
The Oakland County Road Commission.
Right. And who oversees that directly?
I believe it's overseen by Brent Beer.
Yeah. And is that a separate government from the Oakland County?
I'm not sure. There's Oakland County, there's Oakland County government. If you want to compare Oakland County to the city of Troy, you'd have to throw in the sheriff's department to correlate with our police department, the road commission to correlate with our public works department, the Parks and Recreation Division to correlate with our Parks and Recreation Department.
Right. But the, the, it's my understanding that the commissioners and the executive do not have direct authority over the RCO, the road commission's budget.
I'll have to find out for you. I do know that there was a tri-party agreement that we used to have between the city of Troy, Oakland County, and the Oakland County Road Commission, and that is no longer in effect.
Right. Because it's my understanding that Oakland County didn't want to participate in that because they believed they did not have the funds to do so. And the, the road commission has to, because they're the authority over the road, the road commissions are set up, as you know, through the Road Commission Act by county, but they're not directly overseen by the county.
I think the, the point that, that I'm trying to make is that if we're to be compared with another plane of government that has a limited function for service delivery, that's an unfair comparison, because we are a full-service municipality, at least for the next year and a half, that has a police department, that has a public works department, that has a parks department. If we're to be compared with the county, we should also compare ourselves with the county government that offers parks and recreation, streets and drain maintenance, as well as police protection.
See, those are, see, you're missing the point. And the point is, is a, is an executive style of government. And again, a lot, some of that has to do with us here at the table. I'm not putting it all on you, because the budgets are approved by us, okay? I would, I would, and one thing I would offer in support of you is that the city is significantly more efficient than the road commission. And so that's all I have to say. My point that we're, that I started off with was that it, Elbrooks Patterson does not have direct authority over the road commission. And so I think that, you know, that the mayor was making a comment regarding somebody at the podium, I think it was Mr. Witt, who compares the way Elbrooks Patterson is governing to the way the city council and the city manager are governing. And the mayor then redirected that and compared us to the county for the road commission, which isn't Elbrooks Patterson's department, anyway.
Right in the report, which Councilwoman Kerwin referred to, the last paragraph in the story about the new reappointment of the chairman, I'll read. "The road commission board members are appointed by the Oakland County Board of Commissioners and serve for six-year terms." So they're, the people that are on the road commission are appointed by the board of commissioners. So I would say they do have some control over what happens. And it was not just Mr. Witt that spoke about Oakland County government, there've been many speakers that have spoken about that. And so that's why I refer to that. But you notice in my comments, I referred to both the road commission and the county government.
May I, Mayor?
And Councilwoman Kerwin?
Just want to bring it back. Again, the reason I brought up roads specifically was because in looking at a six-figure suggestion or anything else on, that, that Councilmember Beltramini sees, I, I think that in weighing that, that reference to, we could move money from capital to something that would support this memorandum, I would have a problem. There was one more thing on roads that we didn't touch on, manager Zerlag, and it was when you were here. And Livernoy began to fall to pieces. And this body, under your direction, replaced all of that. Who bore that expense?
The concrete at Long Lake and Larni?
Yeah. My recollection is that the city of Troy bore that expense.
Because our standards are higher.
Yes. Big Beaver Road is also a county road. And we were the first city in the state of Michigan to use advanced construction to fund it. It was, the local match was by the Troy Downtown Development Authority.
So I think that in looking at that, again, that priority would have to remain solid. And I, I need you to have complete direction, and I don't know whether you need to see that, with something that happens here, but I, I just can't anticipate that we would move money from projects like that, which I think are paramount, to, to fund anything like this. There must be something more flexible, or more volunteerism, or something that could be done.
I put it in writing two months ago, that the council wished to allocate capital to operating, that they leave roads and water and sewer projects alone.
That's my concern. Thank you for.
Okay. Councilwoman McGinnis?
Just to follow up with that comment, to that comment as well, I did struggle when I was reviewing this memorandum in terms of kind of going from a general ideology that was first introduced specifically by Councilwoman Beltramini at the last study session that we held, and then really taking it from that general ideology to the very endpoint, which is now requesting a line item in the budget, which I, I don't know about the rest of council, I can't speak for anyone else, but the first I've heard of a six-figure number was about five minutes ago. So I personally, and I think I'm hearing the same comments from the rest of council, I personally can't go forward or feel comfortable making any decision on something that has a number attached in one councilperson's mind, but not in the rest of, in the rest of ours. And something that I think has also been talked about since at least January, and I'm sure it's been contemplated long before that, was the issue of the boards and committees and the structure that we have. And I know that we've, we've slowed the process and halted the process in, in some instances until such time that we're able to put in the effort, which means effort from staff, which means obviously time at council table, and obviously means time within each of the individual meetings that are set up for the boards and committees. So I know that we haven't been as specific about what we're looking for in terms of a timeline to review these. But I think that the issue needs to be addressed, again, and mainly, it came, it came even more into the light, I think, with this memo, that I think some of the tools that we have to implement some of the things that Councilwoman Beltramini suggests, and I think we have some of those tools already. And I think, at least with some of the spaces that we've been trying to fill before we put a stop to filling those spaces, it appears almost to be that some of these things may be underutilized. And without really looking into the structure that we have and the history, we don't know why. We just don't have the people there knocking down the doors to fill the positions, yet we have people that come to council meetings and people that email and contact probably staff and council members all the time about wanting to be involved in the process. So I think there's a disconnect there. And I think before we could assign six figures to creating something like that, we really need to look at what we already have in place. So I would ask that when we discuss this again, in a couple of weeks, I'm sure that this will come up again in whatever form that, that we see it, I would ask that we really make some concrete plans in terms of looking at what we have available. And I know that you've gotten some direction tonight, and I'm sure that has to come from the mayor, as well as the rest of council, but for us to really put a little bit more concrete plan in place in terms of looking those things over before we jump into assigning funding to, to those types of projects.
Further comments on this item? Council, comments then? I received in the mail today my census form, and it says, "Your response is required by law." I sat down, had time, filled it out, and on my table at home is the one I'm going to return with the barcode facing out, so like, like they asked. So the reason I bring it up tonight, I want to encourage everyone that watches from home, whether watching tonight, or if they watch during the week, or whatever, as soon as they get their, their census form, instead of setting it down with all your other mail and all that stuff and losing it, to fill it out, easy to do, very easy to do, and send it in. Because the census is used for allocation of funds, it's used for how many congressional members we have, it's used for all kinds of things that are for your benefit. And in there, they include a slip that talks about, your answers are confidential, privacy is of the utmost, and your answers will not be used for anything else. They've specified exactly that kind of thing. They also give contact information if you are not a, if English is not your first language, or if you have questions, or whatever. It's really easy to do. So I encourage everybody, when you get yours, if you got it today, or you get it tomorrow, do it right away. Councilwoman Kerwin?
And, and just to finish that up, when that is sent in, especially within 10 days, no one will ever come to the home.
Right.
So it's a simple, how long did it take you to fill it out? Was it 10 questions?
Uh, no, it took me about five minutes at the most.
Okay. So it would be recommended to do it promptly, and then no one will arrange to come to the home. A couple of things about, in reading minutes, and one is, it's wonderful to have the MSU Extension provide training for both the planning commissioners and board and zoning, and it's at a very moderate price. And I'm hoping that we, that we continue to support the training of folks who hold those positions on those commissions, because I think it's so important. In reading the minutes, I was concerned, because I saw that the chair was not familiar with zoning of churches and those who, who live in residences in those churches. And that, so in asking that question, I would like to, for an oversight view, how important it is that the training is provided for everyone on BZA and everyone on planning commission. Would you care to respond? Is that being done?
I'll have to deflect to Mr. Miller.
Okay.
Well, I, I concur with you that it's very important, and there are, have been budgets available for those members, and we encourage that they do attend them.
Okay. Because I know that it's not a long, particularly for the BZA, it's, it's not a long day at all, in order to do that, it was half a day. So I'm, I'm really hoping that, that happens. The second thing that was in the minutes was from the Ethnic Issues Advisory Board. And this again goes back to when we have our study session, and I would hope that it would come sooner rather than later. Their concern, they passed a resolution, I believe, because they were very concerned that the name of their board was used on a political flyer. And I'm hoping that we will consider a formulation of rules or ethics or something for all of those who formed, that, those who, that's included in the minutes, everyone can see that. But that resolution, I certainly took to heart in reading it, and I, I, I think that we should consider that strongly as we move forward with our study session.
Other, other council comments? I don't know who was next. Was that Councilwoman Harlan?
Okay, that's fine. Well, I just wanted to follow up on that, because I was reading the, the minutes, and the interesting thing is that the resolution simply ratifies what's, what's effectively law, because the city is not allowed to take a position, or any of its boards or committees, or any of its arms, on a, on an election. I mean, this is an election issue. It's, it says, Kelly Jones made a motion to pass a resolution to not allow the Ethnic Issues Advisory Board to endorse or take any political action using the name of the Ethnic Issues Advisory Board. The motion was seconded by Yoder, and some discussion ensued. However, we need to remember that we are allowed to, for example, we as, as members of the city council, or any board members, allowed to go out and campaign, support, or endorse candidates, as, as many of us at this table have done, or issues. And remember, the members of this city council, other than me, took a direct, specific position on the ballot issue primary, at the table. I did mine outside of the council chambers, prior to the February 23rd election. And we have a constitutional right to do that. And to prohibit us from, from being able to do that, I don't think you're gonna find any basis to do so. I think the issue is, is implying that the council, or a board, or a committee is supporting a position or a candidate. And I would agree with you that they can't do that. It's not legal, and it's not right. But the individual members can. And so I just offer that to follow up to your comments as well.
Okay. Mayor, if you ask for floor? Anybody else on council comments? Mr. Lamorato, you had an answer to the question or something?
No, just, Mayor, in the, not to prolong the meeting, but as far as the Troy days and the budget and so forth, I know we're gonna wait till the next council meeting, but that's kind of late for the budget preparation. So what I will do, I will just leave it in the budget for right now, and whatever happens, we could take it out at budget discussion time or so forth. I don't want to have it in there, the next meeting, and the budget's already prepared, and the next meeting you say, well, it's not funded at all, or whatever, and then why is it in our budget for budget discussion? I'm letting you know, it's, it has to be, a decision has to be made for me to put it in or not within the next couple of days to do the budget document. So I could leave it in, or we could take it out after the next council meeting, it'll just be a point of just removing it at the budget discussion if council decides not to fund it any further. Or if you want to keep funding it, we'll just, it'll be, it's in there. But not to put it in there is kind, it's...
My preference is to not have it in the budget. I don't think that we should be spending funds toward that, doesn't, it's not a core service.
I agree.
The other council members can speak for themselves, but that's my opinion. Councilman Slater?
What specifically are we talking about? Troy days?
Troy days' budget.
We weren't, we weren't gonna have anything till next, yeah.
It's to, it's April 5th, and the council, the whole document, everything will be prepared before then, and we deliver to council by, we have our meeting on the 19th, when the actual document will be delivered. I don't want to, I don't want to cause a long discussion, but I just want to let you know, I don't want to have it in the document, and the next meeting, April 5th, you say, well, we don't want to fund it, and well, why'd you put it in the budget? Either that, or tonight, if people don't want it in the budget, then I won't put it in the budget, and we can add it later. But I just... We can add it later, but I just need one way or the other to do it, without prolonging the meeting.
Do you need a resolution tonight?
No. Just comments from each of us, or nodding, or whatever you want here.
This came to me as a regular business item because we wanted to have a decision. I didn't think that council would be ready to make a decision tonight because it's something that doesn't occur until September. I understand and appreciate the fact that we're up against a budget timeline. What we did with Mrs. Beltramini's request is essentially, we discussed it. We're not going to put it in the budget. You can let us know to take something out of the fund balance or modify a capital project, put that study in if you like. We could take the same tact with Troy days. Again, there's 1,300 hours of staff time that I don't think we're going to be able to accommodate with Parks and Rec and Public Works this year because of the reductions that we've had in the past, as well as those that we're going to make. There was $50,000-plus cost in the police department as well. And again, an option that you have is that we'll not include Troy days. If you want to include it based upon a resolution that you'll pass yes or no three weeks from now, at that time, we'll have input from the Troy days committee. My sense is that they'll agree that it should be scratched. They can't take on 1,300 man-hours or hire Wacken Hut security to maintain a level of security at Troy days if you want to make it cost-neutral for the city of Troy. I don't have the knowledge of mass exodus of other volunteers that left Troy days for some reason, but I'll be happy to talk to them as well. I just think that it would be easier, it would be more of a continuity if I have a letter from staff indicating the problems that we have with Troy days this year, if we assume that we weren't going to do it, and then being told by the governing body to put it back in.
Any other council members want to comment? Councilwoman Kirwin?
I just think in terms of tightening our belts, which is what we've been asked to do, that this would be an area that we would tighten, and I don't see it in the budget. I'm not inclined to see it there.
Did I see you signaling, Councilwoman McGinnis, or not? Yes.
Well, I agree personally in terms of the other comments that have been made in the times that we're in and the tightening of the budget that we know is inevitable. More than likely, this is not something that we would be able to continue at such a cost for volunteers to the city and budget. However, that being said, with the comments that I've made about utilizing our boards and committees, which I absolutely stand by, I know that some discussion has been made outside of the council table, I'm sure between city manager and staff members, obviously, that have been working on this event for so long, as well as people that are on the committee, and then I think that they do kind of give us direction in what the answer may ultimately be. But I would personally feel comfortable if we had the feedback from that committee or something that we could stand on before we make that decision, although I know that that may create more work. That would just be my own personal comment.
It's my understanding that the Troy days committee did have a general discussion already. You know, they're kind of watching to see what happened.
I can ask Cindy Stewart to come to the microphone because I spoke with no one on the committee, and Cindy may have. So, if you can hear me, Cindy.
The Troy days committee has not met this year. They had a meeting February 23rd, but decided to forego it because of the election. They have a meeting March 23rd. They have not talked about it. They know about the memo, but they have not given any real comments on it. So, they were probably going to meet on the 23rd. This is what our plan was, based on what your plans were.
And I want the committee to understand my comments that I've made with regard. I appreciate all of the endeavors and help and time and blood, sweat, and tears they put into it. I just don't see us as a city putting any money into Troy days, given our budget constraints. That's my personal opinion. The rest of the council can say what they want.
The few of them that I've spoken to one-on-one, they have said to me that they could not do the 1,300 man-hours, nor do what the police provides. They don't have the equipment, and those nine people said that they could not do that. The bulk of the volunteers that we have there, they're shuttle drivers, but for the operations, that's just what some of them told me.
Thank you for the clarification. Mayor Potemplamy?
I agree with Councilwoman, again, is we need to let this committee do their job, come back to us with recommendations. We might know what it's going to be, but they may have ideas that we haven't thought of. That's what they're there for, that doesn't give us a recommendation before we go and kill it in the budget. I'd leave it in there, Mr. Lamorato, until we can get feedback from that committee as well.
Anybody else? Councilman Slater?
I think we should leave it in there until the next meeting.
Okay, then...
It can be removed from...
Yes.
It was a philosophical issue. And that's fine.
Okay, any other council comments? All right, we have a closed session item before us.
Yes, and could I get, I want to make an apology. First of all, we need to have specificity in terms of the unit we're talking about is the Michigan Association of Police on Strategies for Labor Negotiations.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I read that strategy for labor negotiations, and I'd like to have that broadened, not just to MAP, but to other organizations as well, and leave it just as this, strategy for labor negotiations. And I don't know why we need to limit it to one because we're talking about a budget period that covers several years, that impacts all of these, TPOA, TCOA, and ASME as well. So, I'd like to have discussions of all of those tonight.
I don't know that we're ready to have all of that. I think the request from staff was specific for a reason. Mr. Zurlag?
We ratified ASME a few weeks ago. Their contract expires June 30th, 2011. The contract for the command officers expires June 30th, 2011. The contract for the Troy police officers expires June 30th, 2013. And again, when this whole issue started, I spoke with all the unions about concessions. And ASME came through, Troy fire staff officers came through, and the Troy command officers came through. Now, the command officers and the fire staff officers came through in terms of an outcome of an election that failed. Subsequent to that, the police, or the fire department indicated that they will honor the concessions regardless of the outcome of the village election, so that was good. And I'll be talking with the command officers later on this week. I have now negotiations with MAP, and their contract expires, and it's the only labor contract that expires June 30th, 2010.
Mayor?
Mayor Potemplamy?
I understand that. I'd still like to have that broad conversation tonight, and we can't do that unless we disclose that right now before we go into closed session.
Let's council's preference.
Mayor?
Councilman Howardak?
I think from the standpoint of closed session, it was also the issue of, you know, I thought was to discuss an actual contract that is being negotiated. And if there's not a contract being negotiated, I'm not sure that, correct me if I'm wrong, that we can actually discuss in closed session.
There is a contract being negotiated. This with MAP.
Well, I mean, other than MAP.
There is that.
Right.
Mrs. Blom?
Mayor, we have given this opinion previously, and it is limited. It does, the Oakland Meeting Act does allow for a closed session for discussions, and I can read the exact language here. It talks about strategy negotiation sessions connected with negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement if either party requests a closed hearing. There are opinions, attorney general opinions, and also case law that does limit it to when there is a pending contract discussion, so it is limited.
Okay, so the resolution should be specific for MAP. Councilwoman Kirwin?
I was just handed a note by Peggy. I can read two-thirds of it. We are in negotiations with ASME for health, health insurance.
Sorry, Jen, the second portion was just acknowledging...
I think that mic's off. Wait, is it on?
The second portion was acknowledging that we are in negotiations with a new collective bargaining unit, the Communications Supervisors Association. So, while they don't have a contract that expires, we've just begun negotiations with that group.
We can toss those in as well.
So, those are the items we can discuss?
TCSA.
Okay.
And if you want to talk about health insurance, well, that should be universal once we get health in there.
Okay, so how should we amend the resolution?
TCSA.
And MAP?
MAP, absolutely, and TCSA.
TCSA, okay, all right. Councilwoman Kirwin?
It resolved that Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268E, pending litigation, Troy versus Midwest Master Investment, Troy versus Troywood Shops LLC, Troy versus Old Troy LLC, Troy versus Daya Jeff LLC, Troy versus PG Equities Court Limited Partnership, and Troy versus JMT Properties LLC, and MCL 15.268C, Strategy for Labor Negotiations, MAP and TCSA.
Moved by Councilwoman Kirwin, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution as read. Discussion, Mr. Plod of the vote?
Councilmember Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schelling?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
And Howardak?
Yes.
Motion passes. When we're in recess, and we convene in closed session in five minutes.